Ready? Okay, welcome everybody to the Rye Town Council meeting of September twenty-one, twenty-two-three. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberated and just as one.
Please call the roll.
Counselperson Jill Axelrod. Counselperson Lindsay Ann Jackson.
Here.
Counselperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
And Tommy's not with us tonight. And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Present, you say Tommy's not here as if he's passed away.
Why not? Excuse me, he's not available.
And as you'll notice, Councilwoman Jackson is appearing via Zoom. First item of business, adoption of the minutes of August seventeenth. May I have a motion and a second?
I don't think Lindsay was there either.
You read it.
Oh, I did read them. Okay, I'll say.
Are there any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a presentation from P. Well, that was delayed.
I passed.
We have a presentation from PF O'Connor Davies on our town audit. Jeff Shaver, partner in the firm, will present his audit report for the year twenty-twenty-two.
That is correct. Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Zuckerman. Again, my name is Jeff Shaver, partner with PKF O'Connor Davies. Happy to be here to present the results of the audit of the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. I've prepared a PowerPoint presentation. Most of all the numbers in the PowerPoint really are derived from the audited financial statements. So the audited financial statements are, you know, they get quite lengthy. So we just, you know, dropped them into a little PowerPoint to make it a little easier for everyone to understand and see the numbers. I'll skip right through the agenda and just get into some overview and required communications. The audit is complete. Financial statements have been reviewed by management. We have issued what is known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's also referred to as a clean opinion, and that's the most favorable opinion that you can receive. What that means is the numbers in the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, and the note disclosures are complete and accurate. It does not mean that the numbers are good, and it does not mean that the numbers are bad. It just means that the numbers are fairly stated. Okay? We noted no material weaknesses in your internal controls during the conduct of our audit. If we did, we'd be required to inform the board about that. What that means is the internal controls are working as designed, and they're appropriate essentially. And happy to report no instances of fraud noted during the conduct of the audit. In terms of management's responsibilities and the board, we refer to the board as those charged with governance, selecting and implementing appropriate accounting policies. All the policy, the accounting policies are appropriate and consistently applied, presenting the financial statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, maintaining effective internal control over financial reporting, compliance with laws, regulations, provisions of contracts and agreements, of course, providing all records to the auditors that we request. And last but not least, setting the proper tone at the top, which will flow through through all financial transactions throughout the year. With that said, I'd like to just jump right into some of the numbers. Well, starting here, this is a summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures compared to your budget. The first column is the original budget as adopted by the board. The final budget would encompass any transfers or amendments made to the budget during the year. Your third column would be the actual results, actual revenues and expenditures, with the fourth column being the variance between the final budget and the actual. You can see when the budget was initially adopted, it was anticipated six million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of revenues would be collected. The actual revenues for the year, seven million, eighty thousand. That is approximately three hundred and sixteen thousand greater than what was anticipated or a positive budgetary surplus. On the appropriation side of the budget or expenditures, you anticipated spending six point eight million dollars. Actual expenditures for the year were less, less than that, six million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, or some five hundred and sixty-two thousand less than was anticipated. There was also a budgeted transfer to the Capital Projects Fund of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred, and that was made, so there was no variance in that category. The balancing figure of the budget was one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, which was utilized from a debt service reserve that was created when the town issued a bond in twenty-twenty-one, and it received a premium. So when you receive a premium in excess of the bond you issued, those amounts are required to be used to offset future debt service, and that's what began happening in the twenty-twenty-two budget, and that amount was one seventy-seven, seven ninety-five. So applying the total budgetary surplus between the revenues and expenditures of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand against what you anticipated utilizing from your debt service reserve of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand results in an increase to the fund balance of seven hundred and one thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars to the general fund fund balance. We started the year three million, nine hundred and forty thousand of fund balance. The end of the year fund balance, four million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, three oh seven. I'm going to take you through some details on how we got into the, until we got to that number. This is some more detail on the revenue side of the budget. You'll see real property taxes budgeted at three point six million dollars, actual revenues four point one million dollars. Keep in mind, that's four hundred and sixty-three thousand greater than the budget. As the town collects on any delinquent taxes during the year, as the taxes receivable come down, you can recognize that as revenue in a governmental fund setting. So the positive variance indicates that your taxes receivable year over year improved, or that the taxes receivable went down, hence we're recognizing more revenue, more cash in the bank. Other tax items is the interest and penalties on the property taxes, and also if there's any gain on sale of the in-rem properties or foreclosed properties. That came in a little less than the budget, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand. There was one category, fines and forfeitures. The budget was four hundred and fifty thousand, actual revenues one hundred and thirty-four thousand. There was an estimated an estimated accrual back in twenty-twenty-one for amounts due to the various municipalities for the justice court fines and fees collected. That amount was settled up in twenty-twenty-two, and when that happened, it turned out the estimate was a little low. So it resulted in less revenue to the town in twenty-twenty-two. We did take a deeper dive and looked at that a little closer. And what we determined was the revenue, had that adjustment not happened, the revenue for the year would have been about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So just to keep in mind that, you know, the difference was the one-time adjustment because of the accrual. The state aid was budgeted at one point two million dollars. Most of that is the mortgage tax, which gets budgeted in the state aid category pursuant to New York State guidance. And that's a two hundred and seventy-one thousand positive variance. So the real estate market was doing quite well in twenty-two still, and you were able to collect greater than you anticipated of mortgage tax. So you can see there's some, overall, there's some positive variances, some negative variances, but net you beat your budget or did better than your budget on the revenue side by that three hundred and sixteen thousand. Here, show some details on the expenditure side of the budget. Most of the surplus or the favorable spending came in the general government support category. There's different departments within the town that fall within there, town board, tax receiver, legal, all those general government functions get spent out of there. There was an underspending in the judicial department or, you know, the justice court salaries. The law department underspending by seventy-seven thousand. And there was a contingency budgeted of fifty thousand that wasn't spent during the year, and some various other surpluses throughout the year, bringing you to that five hundred and thirty-seven thousand surplus. That was really the large, that was really the effect, you know, from twenty-twenty-two in those various categories. You had some smaller surpluses in the culture and rec, forty-eight thousand, and so a slight overspending in the employee benefits category of about twenty-five thousand. But net, you still underspend your budget by some five hundred and sixty-two thousand. Now, what does it all come down to? It all comes down to the fund balance. I mentioned a few slides ago. Four million, six hundred and forty-one thousand is the general fund fund balance. It's broken up into various categories here. You'll see what we refer to as non-spendable fund balance represents your prepaid expenditures. So it's bills that the town has paid in advance. So that money is, those funds are carved out to show that you can't spend the money again. So set aside. The restricted for debt service is that premium that was received in twenty-twenty-one, set to be used in future years. So I believe the twenty-twenty-three budget also anticipated utilizing some of that money, and I think after twenty-twenty-four, those funds will be utilized and drawn down. Then there's the assigned category, where in the case of the town, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars has been earmarked to offset the tax levy in the twenty-twenty-three budget year. So that's what the one hundred and eighty thousand dollars of assigned fund balance represents. The difference between those numbers and the total is what we refer to as unassigned fund balance. It's not encumbered, it's not earmarked, it's not set aside for any specific purpose. It's available for use at the discretion of the board, and that number's four million, sixty-eight thousand. That's up from twenty-twenty-one of three million, three hundred and seventy-two thousand, and that is what I would refer to as a strong fund balance in your general fund, for certain. One benchmark that we commonly look at when we do, when we talk about fund balance is compare those numbers to your total budget. The total budget for twenty-twenty-three is about seven point two million dollars, so it's a little over half. Your fund balance is a little over half of your total budget. Keep in mind, and I mentioned this at every time I come into a presentation here, I talk about it with the town comptroller, at least annually, but the town's responsible for collection of taxes for not only itself, but also the county and the school districts within the town. And anything that goes uncollected, the town has to take on that burden of collecting those taxes. Typically, the town has to, you know, upfront those school districts and the county about two million dollars a year before you get to collect it. So it is kind of a use of your fund balance temporarily until you collect those funds. So just something to keep in mind of, as you move forward, that that obligation is always there to the town, and it's something that the fund balance helps cushion against any, you know, unexpected rises in those numbers. But certainly, four million, four point one million dollars on assigned fund balance, the town should be, you know, very pleased with that. It's a nice, strong fund balance, higher than it's been, at least since I've been working with the town for the last several years. Just want to cap off, change gears a little bit, just show you the bonded debt that's outstanding. There's currently two bonds outstanding. One was issued in twenty-seventeen for seven point four million dollars, and another bond was issued in twenty-twenty-one, six point five million dollars. The total amount of the bonds outstanding is just under twelve million dollars. So you'll be budgeting for those payments as they become due every year in your budget. And that's really it. That's all the, that's kind of the synopsis I have prepared. If there's any questions you have on the PowerPoint or on the statements themselves, I'd be happy to try and answer those or go into more detail if you'd like.
Counsel have questions? Lindsay, you have any questions?
I just had a question about the mortgage taxes and the income there, and it's, I'm not sure if you're the appropriate person to ask this. But do we, have you seen in your work, not just with the town of Rye, but throughout the area, trending downward in the mortgage tax, or what's the trend there? Just sort of to keep in mind as we come up with the coming budget.
Good question. Twenty-twenty-one was a very, very strong year. Twenty-twenty-two was also very strong. The twenty, our twenty-twenty-three audits haven't begun yet, but the firm does do work for Westchester County with its budget. So part of what we do is review the mortgage tax revenue collections and try to do our own projections on what those will be, you know, in the coming year, which would be twenty-twenty-three. Nobody expects the mortgage tax numbers to stay where they are. The real estate market has slown, slowed down. The interest rates have increased dramatically, as we're all aware. The prices are still relatively strong, but just the activity has dropped quite a bit. So I would anticipate the mortgage tax numbers to be lower in twenty-twenty-three than they were in twenty-twenty-two. Exactly how much, that I can't say, but I would definitely expect lower rather than higher.
That's an important question because we're going into budget season right now, and we have to put a number in there for next year as to what we're going to be collecting for twenty-twenty-four. Twenty-twenty-three is already locked in. And we got a payment. Davey, when did we get the payment? We get it in the first payment?
First comes in June, and the second half comes in December. The first payment was equal to twenty.
Right, that was my recollection. So it looks like we're okay for twenty-twenty-three in terms of our collections. Something we don't have any control over. All right.
Is there a percentage decrease that you are going to, or some kind of a range you want to give us any guidance on? Based on your data collection?
You know, I don't want to even give one because we did that budget review last fall, and I just can't recollect anything specific, to be honest with you. I just remember the general, you know, consensus at the time was downward. I could certainly get back to you.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, with some more specific information. We also, we audit the county as well, so sometimes we can get, you know, some up-to-date information from them about where they're trending for this year. And share that, share that with you, so you can use that for budgeting purposes in twenty-twenty-four.
The problem with forecasting that is we're going to know what the twenty-twenty-three figures are, and the temptation is to put the same number in for the twenty-twenty-four budget because we don't know what's going to happen with interest rates, and we don't know what's going to happen with sales and refinances and things like that. So it's just, it's just going to be a guesstimate either way.
You're exactly right. You're never going to be able to, you're never going to be able to be spot on with that number. You're always going to be taking your best guess, for sure.
I mean, one thing to do is to talk to the real estate brokers and find out what they're sensing in the market. But that's, again, just, it's going to be a guess on their part as well. Thank you for the question, Lindsay. All right, I don't, I just want to just reiterate, the good news is that our revenue is up, our expenses were down, and we're in a very strong financial position. Is that correct?
I agree.
Thank you. Any, no other further questions? Thank you for your presentation, your yearly presentation.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
We'll see you next year. I'm sure we'll see you a lot before that with other things. Resolutions. The first one is regarding the adoption of a negative declaration in connection with the South Barry Avenue Bridge, a replacement over Otter Creek. This bridge is going to be replaced, hopefully, in twenty-twenty-five. We are in the process right now of working with the engineers and developing a final design. I believe that they will make a presentation at our October meeting to tell us what progress it is. We received a grant from Bridge New York of approximately four point five million dollars to do it. And I think that's a ninety, ninety percent grant, and hopefully we'll be able to find even more money to get the other ten percent. But the work is ongoing, but this is the, the next step is to finish the SECRE. We, as the resolution states, we issued a notice of intent to declare lead agency in August and submitted our full environmental assessment form, part one, in August. I had sent to the full board parts two and three of the full environmental assessment form on September fifteenth for review. And the, the resolution states that upon, that we are resolved that we declare ourselves as lead agency for purposes of the coordinated review pursuant to SECRE, and upon review of the full EAF, we adopt a negative declaration with respect to the proposed action and that the SECRE process is now complete. Any questions? If not, may I have a?
I just wanted to make a comment and just let everyone know this is really an important bridge. It's an essential artery for the village of Mamaroneck portion of the town of Rye. And I want to actually thank Gary and Debbie for keeping the residents of that area in the loop. I know you guys had met recently with them, and, you know, I'm excited to move forward.
Thank you. We are too. It's going to be a very interesting project, doing a complete breach. We've done the one in Hillside previously, so the engineering firm is actually the same firm, and we have great confidence that this will move forward expeditiously. With that, hope please call the roll. Did we have a motion? Motion in a second, please.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion?
Oh, you know what? I'll stay conservative.
The fertile Lindsay. Give me a second. Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson? Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes, thank you. Next item is a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of up to two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to finance the construction of facilities. This is actually for Rye Town Park. The public should be aware that the Rye Town Park Commission issues declarations, issues contracts. The Park Commission does the SECRE and puts the contracts out to bid. And when the bill comes due to do the work, the town of Rye and the city of Rye split the capital cost on the basis of sixty percent for the town of Rye and forty percent for the city of Rye. Those are approximate. Debbie, it's actually sixty-one point something and thirty-nine point something. That's a formula that's set in law, and we are obligated to pay our share, as is the city of Rye. This ban is for the work that had been, number one, set forth in the capital plan of the Rye Town Park Commission that was adopted for twenty-twenty-three, and also for work that is, has been started for the windows and exterior of the bathhouse. And the total come, with all of that is for the city, pardon me, the town of Rye's share is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, which this bond resolution authorizes us to issue. That doesn't mean it has to be issued. In consultation with our comptroller, we'll make a final determination as to how much should be issued, if any of it should be taken out of our reserve funds. But this authorizes us to go up to two hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars to pay off that construction obligation. Motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I can second.
Now, any discussion? See, this time I got the motion first. Any discussion? No? If not, may I have a roll call, please, help?
Counselperson Axelrod? Counselperson Jackson?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes, thank you. Resolution authorizing the application for a twenty-twenty-three grant for the JCAP program. This is for our Rye Town Court. And next to the resolution is a list of the items that the court is requesting. This was prepared by our chief clerk under the direction of Administrative Judge Provenzano. And it's not a considerable number. What is it, a little under nine thousand dollars?
Not even quite.
Not quite nine thousand.
Yeah, and that's, that's, all of this is, it's a one hundred percent grant that the, that the court system gives the town and village courts upon their application for things like furniture and computer equipment, printers, things like that.
It's filing cabinets.
Filing cabinets, servers and backup systems, et cetera. So.
The Department of Administration, I understand, is planning to replace computers next year.
Okay. Yeah, all of the computers in the courts. Yeah, all of the computers in the courts, we don't buy them. The Office of Court Administration replaces them at their cost when they, uh, when they deem it appropriate. They do it every few years to upgrade. So, motion in a second, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll, Hope.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Jackson?
Yes.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Okay, we're up to, um, reports. Does the assessor have a report today?
Uh, I got one, two quick things to say and that's about it. Uh, good evening. Um, as of September fifteenth, last Friday, oh, Charles Zaba, the assessor. Uh, as of last Friday the fifteenth, our assessment roll was finalized. It is now posted on the town's website on the first page, sent to the state. All notices of determinations have been sent out. We've heard back from the public that they've received them. They have thirty days from September fifteenth, so October fifteenth, to file any small claims or certioraries with the town. Uh, and besides that, there is not much else to inform the town board tonight. Have a great-
Uh, are we gonna have a Crawford Park, uh, Camille is, is out ill. Does Vic have a report? Oh, Vic is right there. Heidi and me. Hi, Vic. He does have a report.
Vic Federico, Town, uh, Director of Grounds and Facilities. Just the other day, uh, Gary, Debbie, myself, Joe Armentano from Paraco uh, went out to our culinary gardens with the culinary teacher. And, um, this is a program with the culinary teacher is to have the children uh, plant, nurture, and then bring to the table what they grow. So this fall, we were only able to get some herbs, um, s- some lettuces, and the culinary teacher brought some other vegetables. But the children went out and they picked the lettuce and they used the herbs and, uh, it was just a great day, really. Gonna be a one heck of a program. Um, Mr. Ar-
Want to contribute to that? This, this program is, at this point, in, almost entirely funded with grants.
Yes.
Um, the, the planters have all been funded with contributions. And when the nursery from Rhineak, Mangones, heard that this is what the lettuces and the herbs were gonna be used for, he called me up and said, "This is a donation. I am not charging you for this." I think this is wonderful. So-
So this will, uh, morph into something, uh, hopefully much larger. And, uh, Gary and I had a good talk yesterday as we were down in Yonkers, uh, visiting Yonkers's, uh, first, um, what do you call it, a sensory garden? And Debbie wanna, you know, how'd we get there? Do you wanna say who invited us and-
Carol Conklin, who is, uh, very active in Westchester Disabled on the Move, um, and also sits on the advisory board for the mayor in Yonkers for the disabled, was, um, uh, came to our sensory garden when we opened and was so inspired by the tour that she took, that she went home and recommended a sensory garden for Yonkers. And we visited the, the result of that, of recommendation, which was a full-throated, um, collaboration by the, uh, Yonkers Parks Department. It's wonderful.
Very interesting. They, they did a sensory, they saw, I can't say with Carol, they knew about our sensory garden. And then they did their sensory garden, which was a different way than we did ours. And we viewed that. And now we have more ideas to expand our gardens and to have more. So I think the combination of the sensory garden and the, um, and the gardening with the, the Fiddleheads Program, which is, that's the culinary program, um, they feed on one another. And, uh, what we need to do now, as Vic mentioned, get more people involved. And, um, we really need to broadcast this more to the schools in the area, Portchester, Blindbrook, Rhineak, to see if they can have more kids that wish to participate in this program. I think that, that these are great programs and, uh, uh, just march forward with them.
Okay, on Monday, um, I will be meeting with, uh, construction bidders for the fields, the soccer fields, um, at eleven o'clock Monday morning. And, um, I know the bidding is open, open right now and everything is due by October sixth. Uh, we're gonna resurface the fields out there, which are in, not, they're not bad shape, but they're kind of rough. And I know we've got, and I know we've got a grant to-
Yeah, we have a grant to do that.
Yes. So, uh, that'll be on Monday. Um, a couple of upcoming things. Um, we have Ronald McDonald House for the third straight year, uh, Dash for Dylan, which is a fundraiser for a, uh, young child that had passed away. And this is the third year they're doing it and they love coming here. Uh, we also have, uh, Arts, one oh five seven three. It's an art show on October twenty-second, Sunday, October twenty-second. It's held at four locations and we are one of the locations. It is, uh, supported by the Portchester Council of the Arts. Um, we have, coming up, uh, we've been working on a Halloween movie concert night. Um, one of our concert groups has been rained out of two opportunities and we believe they will do a concert on, uh, October twenty-eighth, which we will follow with a movie. We're also looking at getting, uh, the council and other, um, what do you call it, uh?
Public officials?
Public officials to do a trunk-or-treat between. So children can, you know, gather candy. So that's something we're working on right now. We did meet about the Holiday Lights Festival and, uh, we're pretty much rolling with that. That's become, uh, not very hard anymore.
Once you do it once, once you do it twice, then-
The moment were same as last year.
You have the, the methodology.
Yes, we have it down. Uh, the last thing- Yes. Uh, last thing is, is with the pier. The water fountain will be switched tomorrow morning.
Great.
Okay, and, uh-
The water's on.
Water is on, yes, and it's working.
We're gonna write a book about that one.
Uh, that, we should. That was quite an adventure. Thank you.
Thanks, Vic.
I have a question. I, I think that's a great idea, the children with the gardens. Um, my question is-
Noelia, stand up.
You wanna phone to the, uh, microphone, so everyone can hear?
So, I, I think that's a great idea.
Would you start with your name and-
I'm sorry, Noelia Candelaria. And, um, I, I think this is great, what you're talking about and a great idea with the gardens. How would you communicate this to Portchester, Rybrook? Um, what was the communication to join and have the children also join that?
We have been promoting the Fiddleheads, um, program on social media. We have, um, signs throughout, uh, lawn signs throughout the park as well.
That's great, that's great. In a different, another language, Spanish as well or just English?
I believe that the, I believe it's just in English, but I'm not positive, and thank you for mentioning it.
The, our, the webs- the website has a button where you could get the Spanish translation.
That's great, okay.
Right, but the, the graphics.
Right.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I would say that it's, um, clear from the, um, people who are signed up that it's quite a diverse group of children.
That's great, thank you.
We, we, yeah, there are, there are people from Portchester that, that come there. And I think that one of the things that we were talking about is to reach out instead of just relying on our own media, is to reach out directly to the schools. That's what I just mentioned, the three schools, to let them know of the program directly and let them send out information, letting their lists know that these, that this exists.
Great idea. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to get the feedback from the council members, 'cause we've just volunteered you to, uh, pull your cars up and open your trunks and give out candy on October twenty-eighth. Is that something that you are on board with?
I don't have my calendar out, but of course.
That's a wonderful idea.
Yeah.
I've, I've definitely pulled up my car to the waterfront in Portchester on freezing days and opened it to workers, you know, for the sustainability days, for hot chocolate and donuts out of my trunk. So I'd love to do it here.
Okay.
I think that, um, way to put us on the spot here, but yes, we've already- We've, we've already, Debbie and I have already discussed this. So, um, the, the question that, what Vic is looking into, and State Senator Shelley Mayer has done this before, so we're gonna look to her for guidance. And the question is, for example, what goes in the trunk and how much of it? Okay? I mean, my preference, of course, is to have all chocolate, but I don't think all the mothers would appreciate that so much. Uh, but, um, you know, we're looking into it, but I think it's, it's a great idea to supplement whatever trick-or-treat and get people in the park. We always want people in the park, especially when we're having events. So, all right? And Lindsay, we expect you there with your young lady. Liberty.
I will be there.
Liberty Grace, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Liberty Grace, yes. I would put her on screen, but she's getting an outfit change at the moment. Not gonna go into details, but-
Okay, we, we, we've all been there. You know, we've been there. Financial report, David?
David Burns, Town Controller. Uh, the, the report they submitted each month is just the receivables report as of the month end, prior month end. And as of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, it's one million eight twenty, uh, which is point one eight, uh, point eight-one percent of the levy. The levies for the school district, the villages, the town and the county. And that, the total levies for this fiscal year twenty-three is about two hundred and twenty-four million when you, uh, include all those municipalities. So, the, as Jeff was mentioning, in New Orleans, the town does have to make whole on uncollected taxes to all, all the, uh, the school districts, the villages and the county. And, uh, of that one million eight, uh, the town's already made whole about one million five of that. There's another three hundred thousand that they will make whole to the county on October fifteenth. So, um, that's part of the, the reserve for the fund balance. And again, that, that cha- can change from year to year and shift, but that's why we, we maintain a strong fund balance, is give us flexibility so that we don't have to go out and borrow if we, if we don't have a strong fund balance. And we have to make whole in the school districts every year in April. If that grows from two to three million or more and we don't have a strong fund balance, we would actually have to go out and borrow funds and pay interest on, on, on that borrowing, so. And the other benefit of having a low, um, overall receivables is that the ca- the, the town has cash reserves and is investing that into, into class account and, uh, uh, is, is earning interest at, at a higher interest rate, you know? So, so we're earning some interest, which produces income. And, uh, we're gonna be exceeding our budget in, in that area, uh, for, for two thousand twenty-three by quite a bit.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I, I look every month at the, uh, at the numbers and what the receivables are. And to go to zero point eight-one percent of the rece- of, of the receivables puts us in a, a very strong financial position. And, uh-
Yeah, the, the goal is to try to get to just about one percent, a little over one percent by the end of the year. So when we're ahead, we're ahead of that schedule, it's a, it's a po- very positive thing. And again, it gives us the, the, the town, when it collects that money, and in just in August, there was over three hundred thousand that the town collected, that already had made whole to other municipalities. And then that town can, you know, earn interest on that, on that money right away.
And, uh, we work hard trying to collect those receivables. Our receivers office, our town attorney, work on, on getting that number down as low as it can for the benefit of the taxpayers who do pay their taxes on time. So, uh, anything else, Dave?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Nick, are you on? Mr. Receiver?
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town council. How is everybody?
We're good.
Okay, just a few points I wanna bring to our taxpayers. At the end of this month, the first installment of school payment is due September thirtieth, but that is a Saturday. So by law, you have the opportunity to come in on Monday or put it in our box outside the building, our secure box that has been very active and I'm very happy about that. We will have a picture of that up on the, uh, the website in a few days. But it's there twenty-four seven. There's a security camera on it at all times, so you're as safe as a bug in a rug. You don't need any ta- uh, postage stamp and we send out a receipt. Also, remind you that we have online. We have payments online, again, very secure. We do our best to try to make your tax paying as efficient, as easy, and as less expensive as possible. As I said in the past, you can go out, pay an E check of twenty-five thousand. I just had one come in today from one of the co-ops, thirty thousand dollars. It cost them a dollar and a half. Now that's money from their bank to ours with no problems. So, uh, we try our best. Please, everyone, try and get those payments in. As you hear all the finances tonight, the money's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Nick, thank you very much for that report and, and I don't know if, you know, everybody had focused on that, but what Nick said is very important. We've been trying to make it easier for people. Nobody likes to pay taxes, obviously. But we try to make it easier for people to pay their taxes. And, um, we now, you can pay by, as Nick mentioned, ACH, bank-to-bank, which is much easier for people who can take advantage of that. You can pay by credit card. Uh, I think, though, that the ACH payment is better. You won't get charged interest on your credit card and you won't get a, you, you get a smaller charge by doing it, uh, by ACH, like Nick said. You can pay whatever you want. It's only a dollar fifty. And it goes right from bank to bank. And you don't have to travel anywhere except to your computer. For those people who don't want to use the computer for some reason, don't have a computer or unfamiliar with it, rather than mailing a check, bring it to the lockbox. You don't need a stamp. It's, uh, covered by a security camera twenty-four seven. And, uh, it gets picked up. If you do it during the day, it actually gets picked up several times a day by the receivers office. So as you drive by Grace Church Street, you could just drop it off. You'll get a receipt virtually immediately. As soon as they open it and process it, your receipt will be sent to you. Uh, unlike sending it by mail where you would send it out and you may have to wait two or three days before it gets to the office. This is much easier, much easier this way. And I wanna thank Nick for making this, uh, this process so painless. He's, he's doing a great job with this and, uh, my, very mu- I'm sure the residents all appreciate it. All right, moving on, town attorney. Jeffrey, you have a report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, and Hope?
I submitted my report.
I know. Can see it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Nice numbers. Okay, um, are there any questions from anybody in the audience, on Facebook? If not, no- If not, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.